The regular board meeting, the president's board of trustees, Judge Burnham, Cook County, Illinois, may have September thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. It is now seven P M. At this time, I will ask the clerk to call the role, please.
Trustee Cap? Absent. Trustee Hodges?
Here.
Trustee Garcia? Trustee Greer? Trustee Richardson?
Here.
Trustee Claybrooks?
Yes.
Mayor Polk.
Yes, President. Thank you. Pledge allegiance to the faith of the South American and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. Is there any approval or corrections of the minutes the board made that was held on August twenty-third, twenty twenty-two? Any corrections to the minutes? If there are no corrections to the minutes for August twenty-third, I will ask for motion to approve of the minutes for August twenty-third.
Uh, most has approved the minutes for August twenty-third.
Has the most approved our trustee Hodges, but we have a second?
Second.
Clerk take the role.
Trustee Hodges?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrooks?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Mayor Polk?
Yes. Most passed.
Okay, before we open the meeting to the public, if you have anything to say to the board, if you will stand up and impress yourself for three minutes, uh, and, uh, you can stand up and do that, we'll call you, gentlemen, at the right time. Uh, so are there any pub- I'm gonna ask for a motion to open the meeting to the public. Make a motion to open the meeting to the public. Most of our trusty Claybrooks to open the meeting to the public, could we have a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Hodges, clerk call the role.
Trustee Hodges? Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrooks?
Yes.
Mayor Polk.
Thank you. Most have passed meetings out to the public, public comments.
Yes, my name is Jaclyn Cosby. I live on one hundred and forty-first and Betsy. This is the second car got hit. A man on my block. Them kids is riding them little motorcycles. I got the video on my phone. Me and my son went to the people's house yesterday and talked to the, the, uh, the brother or the sister that ran into my car. The parents was not at home. They supposed to have reached out to me that same day, which was yesterday, and they didn't. We went back there again today. They was not there. So he text his mother and father, and they said that they would be there after seven o'clock. And I wanna know if they don't get in touch with me, can I call the police on them? So my car can be fixed. This is my second car been hit on that block with a motorcycle.
Well, since the police just walked in, I would ask you, uh, could you repeat your question? Can you repeat your question?
Oh, one hundred and forty-first and Betsy, them kids is riding motorcycles back and forth, back and forth. My car got hit. Yesterday. So, uh, the parents is supposed to come and see me this evening. And if they don't come and see me this evening, I'm gonna come to the police and report it.
Okay. There, there's two big issues with that. First of all, the dirt bikes, they're off-road bikes that they're running around with, they don't have plates with insurance on them. So that'll be an issue with you if the person don't pay, okay? And you have to identify them. Secondly and foremost, it's not much we can do with them, because what they're doing is they're getting up onto the railroad property, railroad tracks and stuff. We don't have the capabilities to follow them there. We'd have, we would have to have dirt bikes, okay? Of substance, better than what they have, actually chase them down. There's just absolutely no way.
Okay, so it's nothing that y'all can do about the kids on the street?
Well, we can-
Five and six years old, riding bikes, running into people's cars.
We, we can try stopping them.
Uh-huh.
They don't stop and they take off, there's not much we can do if they get out into the weeds, and they know better. Okay, tho- those dirt bikes are just that, dirt bikes. They're designed to be driven in, uh, weeded, wooded swamp areas.
Okay.
Our cars are not. We're restricted, we can't do that. So once they're in there, they're gone, unless we can identify them at a later time and go get them, which is almost impossible.
Okay, how come signs can't be put up on the block saying no dirt bikes or whatever you call it? They little motorcycles to make.
Yeah. But the problem is, uh, there's speed limit signs, there's stop signs, there's one-way signs, and people don't adhere to any of that either. So do you think these kids are gonna adhere to the signs about no dirt bikes?
I would say, in addition to that, I would just say, the sooner later, and the sooner later, the police are gonna catch them, and, uh, when they catch them in the act-
I mean- It's not like we won't take the action to do it, it's just difficult.
So seems like she should be able to file a report with the police, and the parents should be held responsible for any damage.
If you catch the kid that actually did it.
I know the child, it's on my phone, I have a camera up there.
So you actually saw him hit him?
Exactly. Exactly.
Reported on her phone.
It's on my phone. You wanna see it?
You know who the kid is?
Yes. And she called my son and apologized for hitting my car.
Okay.
Well, see, what I'm gonna do, I was gonna wait and see if the parents don't come to my house first. Then if they don't come to my house, I'm gonna call the police on them, 'cause my car is gonna have to be fixed.
Do you, do you know where he lives in this town?
Yes, I do.
Okay. So, in this case, that, and you, you ready to talk to the parents, you called them?
Me and my son went down there.
Okay.
They don't talk English. The son talks English, that's the one that we talked to.
Okay.
And he text his mother and father today, and they will be home after seven o'clock this evening.
Okay, what I would suggest, because maybe he was interpreting differently to them, and you would know. Okay? I would get a, I'll have to look at the schedule and see when we have our Spanish speakers are available. Have one of our guys go with you.
Okay.
And do the interpretation, which you know would be fair.
Okay.
Okay, follow?
I follow.
I mean, obviously, we would be unbiased, the son would be biased.
Okay.
Okay? And I would do that, so we can look, I can let you know who's on the schedule after the meeting, and then we'll find out who our Spanish speakers are and who's working when, and then you can deal with them then.
Okay.
That would probably be the most practical, uh, interview on this.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
I thank you. Are there any other public comments?
I do have something, my name is April Brinklin, I live at one thirty-nine forty Hoxie. Um, there's recently been some type of event ceremony just being held on the weekends, and I noticed that there's a lot of drag waiting down the street, there's speed bumps. I have four brickheads that live there on the block, and this is, the event runs from six to like eleven at night, and it's like two to three hundred people in the back. Um, I'm just concerned, uh, as a resident with the noise and the, the, the glass bottles being left and, and hanging out in the back. If, if you are aware of it or-
Well, I do know that, I was told, uh, a few months ago, they had a party down there, and then I was sent a video a couple nights ago, and they was having another party. And then someone else had told me that the person is renting the house out for parties, so I was not aware of that, but we are looking into that, and we certainly do not want that type of behavior in the village, you know? You know, we have some, some to that, so we're not afraid of that.
It's, it's actually posted on Eventbrite, which is for the whole world to see.
Okay.
And this is bigger than Thirty-first Street Beach Parties. This is bigger than-
Will you look through that, trustee Hodges?
It's almost the size of the Taste of Chicago.
What's the address?
It's one thirty-nine forty Hoxie, except the back, but my main concern is the, after hours, the, the speeding up and down the street, the loud music, and there are kids on the block, and I've never seen anything like that.
So he says, is it, is every Saturday?
You haven't seen my face here, so it's positive in it because it got me to this room.
So he says, every Saturday?
This, it's not every Saturday, I think it was-
That was, the last was Friday.
It was Friday.
It's, it's the weekend, you mean, right?
But it's the weekend, but-
Between five and like nine, right?
It's sixty.
Yeah, I did give that, I did give that to the police chief yesterday to follow that up, so we are looking into that.
Well, actually, sir, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other public comments?
I was just gonna piggyback on what she said there, but the thing was, when I got up that Saturday to go out, there was whiskey bottles on my grass and a lot of debris. I just put on some roller wheels to kick it off, but it kinda remind me of what we had years ago.
Certainly, I know everybody on that, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
As long as you aware of it.
Oh, you can't park because the parking is taken up, you can't even find a parking space in front of you.
Right.
Okay.
Your car ain't parked, you're gonna get on when you come back.
Is one thirty-nine forty Hoxie the address?
That's my address.
It's not the address, it's where the event is.
It's, it's, it look like it's in the water.
Oh.
If you go down Hoxie and head toward the water, you'll sit like that.
It's not at one hundred and thirty-eight and across the ground.
Okay, thank you for your comment, thank you. Are there any other public comments? Any other public comment? Okay, thank you for your comment, thank you. Are there any other public comments? Any other public comment? I'll ask for a motion to close the meeting to the public.
I'll make a motion to close the meeting to the public.
A motion for, for our trustee Richardson to close the meeting to the public, could we have a second, please?
Second.
Second by trustee Claybrook, clerk take the role.
Trustee Hodges?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrooks?
Yes.
Mayor Polk?
Yes. Um, we're gonna be doing some, uh, street patching, gonna be a couple of various spots in the village, so over the next couple of weeks or so, uh, try to get rid of some of the bumps out the streets, and hoping that don't speed the traffic up. Uh, and also, we've, um, we've been doing some building repairs, uh, at the senior center because of improvements there with the wall tile, some other buildings, uh, need some maintenance work, so we'll take a look at that. Trustee Claybrook might have something in addition, I guess, I mean. Um, I was talking to one of my daughters last night, and I was telling them a couple of mine, a pair of shorts of mine and a pair of cactus of mine had a, a bad stain in them, and she told me I could use a baking soda, this water, they would come out, she was a hundred percent correct in that regard. I didn't know that, I didn't know that, so I asked her whether she learned it from, she said she's learning from her mother, so that means that my wife is dead five and a half years, she's still living in those, that bad.
I thank you, clerk loose.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Um, Secretary of State was at the community center on September eighth, and we had a total of nineteen, uh, driver license renewals, thirteen I D renewals, two, um, under the age of twenty-one, one C D L, and nine renewal stickers. That's pretty good turnout.
Well, it's a good turnout. Will they come back this year? Not this year, we don't have a schedule this year. Think you need it?
And that is all I have.
Yeah, thank you. I'm going to record, or this resolution and plan, and trustee Claybrook, clerk take the role.
Yes.
Public comments, sorry, public comments.
Public, we do that first, yeah.
Okay. Discussion of consideration of and taking action to approve or not approve on the collective bargaining agreement between the Village of Burnham and Teamsters Local Seven Hundred Public Works Department from May first, twenty twenty-two through April thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
Are there any questions from the board about the addition of the contract?
I make a motion, I make a motion to approve on the collective bargaining agreement between the Village of Burnham and Teamsters Local Seven Hundred Public, Public Works Department from May first, twenty twenty-two through April thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
So you made the motion, will now we give you a second?
I'll second it.
Second by trustee Hodges, clerk call the role.
Trustee Hodges?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrooks?
Yes.
Mayor Polk?
Yes. Um, according to the resolution and plan, I doubt trustee Claybrook would take that.
Discussion of consideration of and taking action to approve or not approve on the ordinance number two zero two two dash O dash zero zero three, and ordinance establishing, establishing the salaries of elected officials, appointed officials, local liquor control commissioner, members of the police department, members of the fire department, and other employees of the Village of Burnham, Cook County, Illinois.
So you made the motion, you made a motion.
That's right. I make a motion now, I make a motion to approve on the ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash zero dash zero zero three, and ordinance establishing the salaries of elected officials, appointed officials, local liquor control commissioner, members of the police department, members of the fire department, and other employees of the Village of Burnham, Cook County, Illinois.
A second.
A motion for, for our trustee Claybrook, second by trustee Richardson, clerk take the role.
Trustee Hodges?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrooks?
Yes.
Mayor Polk?
Yes.
Number two, discussion of consideration of and taking action to approve or not approve on the new business application by Doe Management Incorporated, E B A Domino's Pizza. The location would be one hundred and, one thirty-eight fifty Brainerd, Unit A, Building B, Burnham, Illinois, six oh six three three.
Okay, so before you make the motion, trustee, before I ask for the board's consent and approval, we have a representative here from Domino's, so you would just stand up and give us an introduction, and I'm sure to go up and ask some questions.
Sure.
Yeah, my name is Ochim Burnham, my partner is Steve Casper, he's here as well.
Hello.
Hello.
Okay, go ahead.
Oh, so, yeah, so we're, uh, got a spot picked out, obviously, you guys are already aware, um, across from the Burger King, um, we own several franchises already, um, this will be number thirty-eight, um, most in northwest Indiana, um, their stores are over in Hammond. Been in the bus- Oh, sure, sorry, I've been in the business since nineteen eighty-four, started as a delivery driver, uh, worked my way up and, uh, been franchising now for about thirty years, um, so if you guys have any specific questions about Domino's, happy to answer them, but hopefully you guys are familiar with us.
Okay, so, um, so Prosperous, how long do you think it would take you to put the operation together?
So we are, our plans are finished and our equipment's ordered, so we're ready to start construction, I was not aware of this process, so, um, that's the only thing holding us up right now, 'cause we, this is the first time I've actually had to do this in any, any town, so, but we're ready, we're pretty much ready to start going. I would say we would start by around October first is what our hope would be, and it probably would take, 'cause of the holidays, it might take ninety days, but somewhere between the sixty to ninety day mark.
We always just bring everything before the board, so that way no one will be able to say that I didn't know.
Gotcha. Sure, sure.
Some transparency.
Gotcha.
Any other questions?
How's your hiring process? Are you full staffed already?
No, no, so we, you know, obviously, we would like to hire local, um, from the community, um, so that would be, you know, how we would approach that.
Also, you stand over here, there's somebody, you can't even say.
Oh, I'm sorry, we're over here.
If you don't mind.
Over here?
Yeah.
Sure. Um, so, yeah, so we would, we would try to hire local, um, that would be our, our disposition, um, we'd probably be looking to bring in about, I would say, probably about fifteen, fifteen to twenty people, depending on how the volume is of the store, full and part-time.
What would be your hours?
Uh, we open at ten A M. and we close at midnight, and then one A M. on the weekends, on Saturday, or Friday and Saturday.
What kind of store?
Uh, Domino's Pizza.
Oh, good.
But also, like I said, for the record, like I said, for the record, this would be the first national chain in the Village of Burnham ever. Are there any other questions?
Where it's gonna be located?
Do you know where the Burger King's at?
Which Burger King?
In Harris?
Yeah, right across the street from there, there's the strip center that's being built, that's being run, I mean, right now.
That's considered-
That's not Burnham.
That is Burnham, yeah. That corner, that one corner is Burnham.
Right, on the corner.
Mm-hmm.
Well, that'd be about a hell of a burn.
Yep.
Old car wash is in Chicago, but there, but the new building, that's in Burnham.
We need a pizza place, thank you.
Are there any other questions?
And we deliver, so we have something to go out in the winter.
If it's, if it's meaty.
Okay, well, thank you.
Okay, thank you, guys, nice to meet all of you.
I make a motion to approve on the new business application by Doe Management Incorporated, E B A Domino's Pizza. The location would be one thirty-eight fifty Brainerd, Unit A, Building B, in Burnham, Illinois, six oh six three three.
There's a motion for, for our trustee Claybrook to approve the application from Doe Management by Domino's Pizza, so could we have a second, please?
Second.
Second by trustee Richardson, clerk take the role.
Trustee Hodges?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrooks?
Yes.
Mayor Polk?
Any lady, yes.
All right. Thank you, most have had, now you're in a belongs to us now. That's something we can be of assistance, uh, for too, and if you would then-
Okay, thank you very much.
Um, then, uh, trustee Claybrook?
Yes, that's it.
Final question, Richardson?
Yeah, that's- Good evening.
Good evening.
Discussion of consideration of and taking action to approve or not approve on authorizing the payment of this month's bills. So I make a motion to authorize, to approve on authorizing the payment of this month's bill.
You know, the motion on the floor, uh, trustee Richardson, I think it was second by trustee Hodges, clerk take the role.
Trustee Hodges?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrooks?
Yes.
Mayor Polk?
Yes.
Uh, prepare. Are there any questions?
Uh, for finance, ready for me to utilities?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, good evening again.
Good evening.
Um, I'd like to mention that this coming Saturday, September seventeenth, we'll be having a garage sale at our community center from nine to three. Uh, COVID vaccinations will be given, and Seda will be there to, uh, fill out forms if you need assistance with your energy, water, gas, and electric. Also, um, this is just knowledge. Are you ready for the, when the cold wind blows? This is a list of things you can do to prep for winter. Outside, you can repair your damaged shingles, windows, and doors, clear your gutters of any leaves or debris to prevent any roof damage, inspect your yard for any tree branches that could interfere with power lines, turn all, turn all outdoor faucets off. Flush outside faucets before winter to remove any excess water that could freeze and burst. In your attic, look for any holes and seal them, weather strip and insulate the attic door or hatch to prevent warm air from escaping out of the top of the house. Inside, make sure your heating vents are not blocked by furniture, run the fan clockwise to pull warm air down from the ceiling and keep it circulating in your home. There's a switch on your fan to reverse its direction. If you have a fireplace, make sure it is inspected and cleaned before using. When you're not using your fireplace, make sure the damper is closed to prevent warm air from escaping. Always check your smoke and carbon monoxide detectors. Building fires and using the furnace could lead to accidental house fires and carbon monoxide exposure. Make sure your detectors are working, replace the batteries if you're unsure of the last time they were changed. So these are some tips you can do to, uh, get ready for winter. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Richardson, you have a important observation, possible recreation, trustee Hodges?
Yes, um, first of all, um, hello, everyone.
Hello.
I want to thank everyone for their support this Saturday, for the mayor, and the clerk, and all of the trustees for their support, our basketball tournament Saturday, we had a decent turnout, um, but, um, if you, if you see any type of, um, any flyers for any tournaments going on, I think for the kids, let the kids know, get the word out, 'cause I want to make sure the kids got things to do, I want to keep them, uh, safe and have things to do. Also, uh, I have another tournament coming up, September twenty-fourth, we have a soccer tournament coming, uh, annual back to the soccer tournament, and that's gonna be at Burnham Park, and it's gonna be at twelve o'clock. Yeah, if the time change, I'll, we'll let you guys know, boys, it's gonna be twelve o'clock, September twenty-fourth, okay? Um, also, I want to, this is from, this, and also, um, the, I want, I can thank the fire department too, 'cause we partnered with them, they actually, um, was there to help the kids out, as far as refereeing, they actually donated the uniforms for the kids, so, big shout out to Chief Pooch and the rest of the fire department, they did such a great job with the kids Saturday, they're also helping us with the soccer tournament, and again, I want to thank everybody for their support, for September twenty-fourth soccer tournament. Yeah, so, okay, um, also, I want to, this is from the chief's desk, I want to, uh, want to point a grant award from the fire department. Um, this is to Honorable Mayor, clerk, and the trustees, our respected Smith is led to bring wonderful news and announcement that the Burnham Fire Department has been awarded thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and nineteen dollars, um, from a FEMA assistance to firefighters grant to be used towards new extracations equipment for our members. The new education equipment will be used to help our firefighters safely educate citizens from trapped vehicles and stabilize scenes, and use as forceful entries for hard open doors with, which the structure is on fire, just to name the things with these new tools. So basically, um, we're getting some new tools for our fire department to be used, um, tax-free, it's a grant, and, um, these ones give us, let everybody know we got new grants, some new fire equipment.
Thanks to David Sayeta.
Yes, thanks to David Sayeta.
'Cause he's the one that did the grant money.
Yep, yeah, David Sayeta, yeah, right there, there are safety officers, David Sayeta, he did the grant.
Yes.
For dedication to the village, so, yeah, I see him, said thank you, said, keep them safe, and that's all I have.
I know what the, the media is close to the public, but, uh, sometimes things happen after the meeting, like, the gentleman said he was opening up his business, are you gonna hire any, uh, employees from Burnham?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
A hundred percent.
And-
Why?
I didn't hear that.
He said he was gonna hire locally, which, you know, means the community.
I just want to know if it's gonna be from Burnham, was it?
You may arrange the job. We have to staff the store, so I mean, anybody who wants to come in, absolutely.
You gonna fill out an application?
Yeah. And, and another thing, they send me the, the tickets from the fire department, already wrote out the check, and I'm like, just take it up there, put, drop it in.
Oh, you can mail it if you want to, uh, uh, take it up there, I think they got a mail slot there.
Okay.
If you wanted, you can bring it up here as well, so.
Okay.
Yeah, we have, give it to them.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I thank you, trustee Hodges, for that report. I'm pleased that, uh, here, communication reference, Mariah, um, and, uh, that's- So, in unfinished business, but we'd like to announce that we will not meet on September twenty-seventh, that will be our summer recess meeting, so the next meeting is meant to be September two, November, there is a project that is pending, that might be going to public bid, so, push come to shove, and I'll have to call the board back early, before the summer meeting in October, so, if that happens, then, uh, then we'll make it public, we'll publish it like we always do. Um, under, uh, new business, um, you need that trustee, trustee Hodges. And before, and before he start, this pertains to executive session, again, we have to, uh, discuss the issue of this matter in action against employers, termination, or whatever the case may be, uh, litigation, uh, imminent litigation, whatever the case may be, we have to go into executive session, so that's what this next part is about, if you want to stay, after we come out of the executive session, then we'll be back out here, and then we're dismissed.
Uh, so, uh, request for close session per five I L C S one twenty dash two copyright, uh, twenty-one, special minutes, lawfully public, but for purposes of approval of minutes, semi-angry minutes. So, next one, five, um, next one, five I L C S one twenty dash two copyright eleven, litigation when action against affecting or behalf of the village has been filed and pending for a court, a legislative trial, you know, or when the board finds that an action is probable or imminent. or when the board finds that an action is probable or imminent. Also, uh, five ILCS one twenty dash two copyright one. Appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel.
Okay, so, I'm gonna ask for a motion, and we can avoid the regular session.
Yeah, that's it?
Yeah.
I need a second.
I made a motion, but I would question the motion.
I can, I, I, I would submit the motion for us to close the second session.
We want to break, so that would be the second, so.
Second.
We'll break this one.
Trustee Hodges?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
Mayor Paul?
I get the motion as now, a rule of the board to break the session.
Trustee Richardson, when you're done today, if you have a minute? Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to, um, to resume, um, if that, uh, needed.
I second.
That's the motion you made.
No, no, I'm, I'm gonna ask for a question. I'll give you somebody a second.
Sure, I, I request for us to, a motion for us to resume our meeting.
Okay, so, a motion on the floor by trustee Hodges to resume the regular board meeting.
I second.
Second by trustee Richardson, will take the role.
Trustee Hodges?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
Mayor Paul?
Yes. And now, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn the regular meeting.
Make a motion to adjourn.
A motion on the floor by trustee Claybrook to adjourn the meeting, can we have a second?
I second.
Trustee Hodges, second the meeting. Second, ready, go.
Trustee Hodges?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
Mayor Paul?
I'll meet you for adjourn, thanks for coming. Trustee Richardson, when you're done today, if you have a minute? Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to, um, to resume, um, if that, uh, needed.
I second.
That's the motion you made.
No, no, I'm, I'm gonna ask for a question. I'll give you somebody a second.
Sure, I, I request for us to, a motion for us to resume our meeting.
Okay, so, a motion on the floor by trustee Hodges to resume the regular board meeting.
I second.
Second by trustee Richardson, will take the role.
Trustee Hodges?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
Mayor Paul?
Yes. And now, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn the regular meeting.
Make a motion to adjourn.
A motion on the floor by trustee Claybrook to adjourn the meeting, can we have a second?
I second.
Trustee Hodges, second the meeting. Second, ready, go.
Trustee Hodges?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
Mayor Paul?
I'll meet you for adjourn, thanks for coming.